There we go.
Oh, I'm sorry. Now we are. There we go. Thank you.
You're ready folks?
I'm getting close.
About that time. Said what to hear?
My phone is fast.
Do you have a single B here?
No.
That's a little jump. Okay. Two of them. One of them. Whoa, whoa, whoa. Are they gonna move? Do they intend to do that business? I was gonna say, is this the right building? Oh, okay. Is this the right building?
When I send it out there, see? Straw down, so there's rain, and I got a set all right in for a big wind comes, block blurs all the way. Yeah, really, it's fast. It's fascinating to watch.
Yeah, I watched some of it.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Here's weird, when they tour the back of the gym, I'll see all the rafters and like how much stuff's up above.
Yes.
You know the weirdest part of all of it? I started coming down Second Street today, and not to see that at the end of the street is the weirdest thing of all of it. Because it's always a... Yeah, that always looks nice at the end of the street.
Yeah. I thought you were gonna get downtown, but I like that a lot. This is the old, this is the new.
All right.
I don't know what the whole thing looks like. Somebody here tonight?
I'd be in the second block down, wouldn't it towards the end?
It's down towards the track.
Yeah.
I used to be in an opera house.
Send it.
Wow.
Not sending it, just starting it.
Huh, wow. Yeah.
I'd like to welcome everyone to London City Council meeting. Please stand, join me in the pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silent reflection. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Clerk, could you please take the roll call?
Ead.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
Robinson. Comer.
Here.
Hayes.
Present.
Hit.
Here.
Stahl.
Present.
Good to see everyone this evening, and you've received a copy of the minutes. Any changes, corrections, additions? All right, all in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
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 All right, opposed, same sign. All right, one, two, our public hearing, we do have a public hearing this evening for legislation ordinance one eighteen twenty-three, like a motion to enter our public hearing.
Make a motion to enter into public hearing for ordinance one eighteen twenty-three.
Second.
Second, all right. Clerk, please take the roll call.
Councilman Ead.
Yes.
Councilman Peters.
Yes.
Councilman Comer.
No vote.
Sorry. Uh, Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hit?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Okay, we have entered our public hearing for ordinance one eighteen twenty-three. Motion to read by title or number.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, please read the ordinance.
Resolution adopting the recommendations of the Planning Commission for preliminary development plan. Whereas the Planning Commission has met and approved the attached plan, and whereas council must set this for public hearing before approval, now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of London, state of Ohio. Section one, the following a public hearing on the application in accordance with the Planning Commission's recommendations, this council hereby approves the application. Section two, this, that this ordinance shall take effect and be in full force from and after the earliest period allowed by law.
John?
This is for Kenny Station Apartments on Kenny Boulevard. They made some, one change, they had two entrances, they moved it down to just one. And, uh, that's all I have to say, I guess.
Okay, do you have any questions or discussion on ordinance one eighteen twenty-three?
Didn't they also limit that number of apartments?
Oh, that's great.
From like sixty-one or two down to fifty-five?
Yes. I have, uh, I have several things. Uh, I think this is gonna be a safety hazard for all the people that are on Kenny Boulevard. It's gonna be an additional, up to a hundred and ten cars on Kenny Boulevard at various times of the day. The road is already overloaded, overworked. Semi-trucks, school buses, what have you, uh, coming to and from forty-two and thirty-eight, as well as over four hundred people that live in the condos there. I think that you have mass and health at the end of the street, and I think this project, if it's approved, I just think it's gonna be accident after accident out there on the road. A lot of my people have spoken up about it, uh, there's just too much traffic. They're not happy with having a big apartment complex across from them. Some of them are scared. And I, I feel that, I feel that. I'm not bad-mouthing apartments per se, but, um, we have a private community where we live, and they're worried about people just bouncing across the street and bouncing in, walking around, riding their bikes, uh, dirt bikes, whatever they have. And we don't allow that in our area. I think for the size of this apartment complex in that little of a space, I just think it's overwhelming. There's, I just, I'm just against it. I'm gonna have to have Kenny Road, it's gonna have to be torn up to accommodate gas, cable, electricity. I don't know how long to be torn up, so that's another, that's another issue in itself. I know the apartment complex will be paying for the repairs and resurfacing of Kenny Boulevard. And I could be wrong, but I don't believe Kenny Road is wide enough to accommodate a turn lane, which we are going to have to have. There's no way that you're gonna have that much traffic and you can get up and turn. I've, I've been almost rear-ended, I don't know how many times, with the road that's there now. That road is not wide enough. You need a full turn lane in there, and needs to be widened to the north, at least three, four feet, in my estimation. And then you can put a full turn lane in there if you have to. But, uh, I just think that this is too much for that road right now. Uh, it's a great concept, great, but someplace else, not there. There's just too many, too many people, too much traffic, too many uncertainties. And I think there's probably some people here to speak on it tonight.
Yes.
Rich, the Danes Apartments, I mean, there's not much difference between Danes Apartments and then these new apartments, all that traffic out the other end. I mean, I think this would be good for the, for London to have another apartment complex.
I don't agree with...
It's unfortunate that's across from your condos, but, but I think London needs another apartment complex.
I agree with you.
Yeah, we see that London's, a lot of people are looking for rental space. I think this would be a great addition for London.
I agree, we need to, uh, like I said, I know we need to rough, but I just, I just think for that, that complex, they're trying to shove in that little space, a hundred and ten extra cars on the road. I just, no.
Back years ago, when Kenny Boulevard was built, it was built, split up at some time in the future when it got busy. They have a turn lane in the middle. Yes, that was back, I think, the eighties, it's a long time ago back when I was first in council, but... I think it's once it's actually striped, it would look different from what it does the way it is now, because we're used to just tearing down the middle.
Uh, Rex, in regards to roads, or Bill, in regards to roads, do you have plans they have to widen those roads, add turning lanes?
Kenny should actually be widened up forward.
Okay, so it actually is, that's already been engineered to have a turning lane, okay? So, like, uh... Okay, yes.
Um, we actually were looking at this for another reason. And we measured in the intersection, we'll say, right in front of Rich, between Rich and Merchants on Lafayette. Lafayette Street's about forty, forty-one feet wide. Kenny is about forty feet wide. So they're very similar to, and there's a turn lane on Lafayette, as you know, so...
Okay, so it would definitely accommodate a turn lane, uh, which is what it's going to need. You know, and another thing is, our city is looking for rooftops and within the city, and that's a, it's an empty field. So that's a perfect location for that, you know. When, when development looks to come into town, they're gonna need to be somewhere. And it's gonna be somewhere where maybe there's not development already. So those are gonna be the places they pick, and those places they pick may just happen to be across from, you know, someone else's house. But that's kind of, you know, what happens with growth. You know, you'll have, you have to have a place to have it, uh, and then you need to have the roads to accommodate and everything. And like Mr. Stahl said, they accommodated for that, you said back in the eighties?
Yeah, back, it's a long time ago.
It was planned to, to, to expand back when Kenny was, that's when Kenny Road was put in?
When Kenny was put in, yes.
So they, they made plans for growth even way back then, so, uh, I think they've accommodated for, for that. Any, let's see here. Yes.
What's the, um, I know there was, the traffic light was looked at, at the Kenny and one forty-two. Is there any likelihood that the traffic light would be able to be put in at Kenny and one forty-two with the additional people in there?
Well, I, I'll just let you know, that's why we were looking at Kenny was to possibly put a turn lane down on that end of Kenny. So when you go down, you'd have a lane that turns left or goes straight into ADS, and then a lane that goes right. Because a lot of that congestion happens because there's someone trying to turn left, and they don't quite get to, over to the middle, and people can't get around the side of them to turn right. So that's why we were initially measuring those roads.
We did do a traffic study of that intersection, uh, last year. While there are point in times during the day where their volume does merit, it's not a, it's not a wide encompass, a long enough time of where we need that. So it's only certain times where the volume is high enough. Now, we get more rooftops there than it probably would increase the volume and where it would expand the whole day, and then it might merit at that point in time.
Another study, yeah.
So Mr. Hayes, Councilman Hayes, a couple of his comments made me think of a few other things. One is, um, as recently as just a few years ago, you had an extra forty, fifty, sixty employees that were in the building just on the other side of that, they worked in the, the county building. Those employees came out, a lot of those came out that way. I don't know that this changes, that those were all the employees that worked at the ADS office. And they're no longer there, they've closed that down, so those employees aren't there anymore. And, uh, the other thing that I thought of, not only would you limit the use of this one lot, you're also gonna limit the use of the lot on the exact up other side of the chamber, which is owned by the Peters family, and I believe that they have intent, you know, eventually to, to wanna develop that land. If we limit this, we're gonna limit them also.
So, yeah, we definitely don't want to, at this point, we don't want to limit growth within the city, if at all possible. Let's see here. Anything further, one, one eighteen twenty-three? I know we do have some audience concerns, that we'll address that. Yes, and you can, if you can use the microphone, please, that way we can hear you on the recording, thank you.
I'm James Wilson, I live at eight fifty East One Circle.
Okay.
My back of my condo is on Kenny. There is a part, a bit or something in the road, that, you know, my house shakes whenever trucks go over it, okay? I'm not saying that, it comes from you guys, but you know, when you have more traffic on there. The other question I had is that, I realize that you moved the entrance, okay? Had you, it's not that it bothers me so much of everybody being across the street, it's just them coming out on Kenny, okay? Why couldn't it came out on, was it Lafayette? Why couldn't you found a way to come in that way and bring people in versus coming out on Kenny? That was all I have. I just tried to figure out, tried to keep all that topic from coming down Kenny, because as you said, you may have done a run on how many people come down Kenny, and at certain times of the day. I realize that, but did they have to come out on Kenny to get in to their place? Cause they have not come out, uh, you said ADS comes that way, why couldn't they came in through Lafayette? Instead of coming in from Kenny and coming out from Kenny?
Okay, yeah, cause I'm not sure if there's a, like, public access road through that.
I, I, I can answer that, there's not a public access road there. So that piece of property butts up to property that's owned by the county. The county actually owns the TSC, um, building, and also the land around it. So if you know there's a little driveway and a gravel kind of parking lot there, that's county land. So that's really owned by another entity, right? So, um, there would be no access point because they own the land. This lot is only for that three and a half acre lot, so...
I'm here what you're saying, so, and, and I heard you guys say that possibility that Peters may eventually sell, and that means more traffic again. So have you taken into consideration how to not have everybody on Kenny? I'm, you know, I, you know, we look at maybe developing as something that I think you need to look at. I'm not saying if you can't do it now, that somebody does not do that later, is to look at a different access rather than Kenny.
I, I can talk about that a little bit, too. Now, that piece of property, those two pieces of property would be very difficult, because the, the piece that the Chamber of Commerce sits on was given to them by London, the London Foundation, and all that wooded area back there can never be developed. It's in the deed that it cannot be developed. So these pieces are kind of set within that box, so they could never go back. They could never, like, even if we built a road behind there, it would have to be behind the, um, the wooded area. When I first became mayor, Stanley bought a piece of land across the street from them, or, or, across the street from where their building is now, and they planned on building, and they still own the land, and at some point planned on building another facility there. And we were able to get grant dollars, and we were going to extend a road, Eagleton, all the way across to one forty-two. Now, with that building not going in, they took the grant dollars back. But there is talks about putting another road, but I don't think that we would be able to access that area because it's boxed in by the, by that, by that, uh, force back there. Yeah.
It, it appears that eventually you guys are going to run into a problem anyhow with traffic. We're gonna be like Hill, you're going down Rome Road, you know? You guys know this life, and there's no stoplight for us. There's nothing on Kenny. And if you teach the bouncing, it's perfectly fine, so we know everybody's going to take people places. When I, it's just, you know, when you do that, when you do, you box people in, and there's nowhere for you to get out. And yes, I, you know, we may, we're not concerned about students, but you know, you have to be like that in the long seniority. People pulling out into traffic.
Yep.
And that's all I'm saying, is that, you know, when you look at your study, oh yeah, it's nice to have all this, but there's no other routes.
Yeah, yeah.
To get people around.
All right, thank you.
One thing they did, they blocked off the one road, and always, all my years I've been on, they've always had an access road across from each other. It alleviated traffic to help to see in each other, but they wanted this and down the street, it was just unusual for me, but I think the whole development is great.
All right, thank you. Anything further on one eighteen twenty-three? All right, a motion to exit our public hearing?
Motion to exit the public hearing for one eighteen.
All right, clerk? Yes, during audience concerns. All right, thank you.
It should be during, it should be during audience concerns.
Are you here, or are you here to speak on that? Oh, yeah, then let's speak on that, then, um...
I'll rescind my motion to exit the public hearing, make a motion to go back into public hearing for one eighteen.
Just rescind her.
Just, just rescind.
And let's see here, cause some of these are, and what's your name? Okay, yep, here we go. Yep, all right, you can come on up and... Thank you, I have it right here.
Thank you again for allowing us to speak and everybody coming. I spoke the last time, just a couple things I wanted to reiterate. We, I have talked to many residents, and a lot of us do worry about the people living there coming into our area that is private, just because we've had our cars hit, as I mentioned, we've had people walking. I've walked with a friend almost every night, we've all been hit by our own, our own residents several times. We have to wear orange vests because they're elderly and they don't see us until the last minute. So that is a concern for a lot of us, of them coming over and using our area that is private to exercise or, you know, bring our children over and walk, that's still a concern for a lot of us. Almost, a couple times a week, if I'm coming home and I'm getting very disturbed and the condo's on the right, you know, some species area. A couple times a week, I'm, time signal on way ahead of time, and I will have a car go around me, the oncoming traffic, and just barely get back over, or I'm almost hit near it because they're not allowing it up. And that's a concern, if you now have three lanes or turn lanes, they're gonna be still coming in more, coming in traffic. And did they talk about, um, the number of apartments, were they reduced?
They're down to fifty, fifty-five.
They were now down to fifty-five. So I just, speaking for a lot of people, it's still hard to discern about it. We understand and we need it, but that's such a small area, and we have only one way in and one way out, and we just don't feel it's, it's a safety issue for us. And I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you. And I know initially, they were, they were scheduled for two exits out of the apartment, and then they moved it to one. Now, where, the one that they left, where's that position?
It's down. Left-hand side is your face.
It's north of the...
It would be on the west side of the complex.
Okay.
Towards Lafayette.
Now, also, too, with the addition of the turn lane, are there lights that are gonna be put in, you know, as you exit, exit the apartments or the condos, or on that street anywhere? To, uh...
And there's a, I struggle getting out, and they're part of the traffic at turn now, and everything. And all of a sudden, it's like, there's a lot of people, but I can imagine, you have to be...
Is there any way to add lights, turn, turn lights, or, I don't know if that would, yeah, I would say, I don't know if that would... Yeah. Now, would there be better traffic flow if there were two entrances to the complex?
So, so the reason that it went...
Yeah, cause why would you go to one?
The reason it went from two to one is during the Planning Commission, a lot of people came, and, and their, one of their concerns was, there was, their exit was right across from their exit, so the exits were right across. So what they didn't want is, you know, two people pull up at a stop sign, now they're looking down Kenny, one of them goes to turn left, one of them goes to turn right, and boom, there they are. So that's where the suggestion came to, hey, let's get rid of that one. Just do, just do the one that's, that's towards, um, ADS, down that way, um, towards the chamber, and then just have one entrance in and out, so there's not, cause if there was three, you'd have somebody turn this way, somebody turn this way, and maybe somebody pulling out this way, too. So now you got all these cars, and that was the safety concern they brought up, and we thought it was valid, and we asked them to make that change, and they did so.
Okay, so that made it a lot safer just with one entrance, okay? And it's not across from...
It's not across from anything.
Anything, okay. So they have made it a lot safer to accommodate for new traffic through there. Okay, and then I have Charlotte. Okay. And let's see here, I have another one, Don Hartley, is that also for the apartments? Okay. Let's see here, and Joyce Bond? Okay, if you could, if you could use the microphone, please, cause we are recording, so that way we will be able to hear. Thank you. And clerk, are there any other, uh, excuse me, clerk? Are there any other forms?
Documents.
Is there one more, um, out there? I think someone else signed when I took me. Thank you. Yes.
I'm concerned about the children. If there's children over there, and they're big trucks, and those big trucks move, and I'm sure, they look like they're going fast to me, but they're probably doing the speed limit, but it takes a lot of time to go out there and go quick. And those trucks take a long time to stop. And with the children there, and wants to go over here, and they're not supposed to be over there into our community, but that ain't gonna stop them. I mean, kids are kids, and they're gonna come running, and I'm afraid with the children that that's not gonna be a good thing for them. I really concern my life. And plus, you know, the end of traffic here, the chambers got, even when the chamber over here has traffic coming out, you have to be careful because you don't know which way this is going and that's going, and there's cars coming every which way. You have to really be careful there so that you don't get hit. There's lots of times when I'm coming home, if I think the traffic's coming one way, then I'll go way around the block to come in the other way, so I'm turning right into the, you know, into the community, so that I don't have to cut across traffic. That's it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And, and there is no turn lane there currently, correct? So the turn lane, the addition of the turn lane is gonna add an additional space for cars to be able to turn, uh, and to be able to see each other and notice each other. So that's something that isn't there now, so that'll be, uh, an additional safety step for the traffic in that area. All right, I'll, let's see here, uh, Jamelyn Wilson, I think already had that, and then, okay, already, yeah.
I'm sorry, I did say, I did say.
She did, she... Have you state your, uh, name and address?
Yes, uh, Don Hartley, East One Circle Drive. I just wanted to clarify one thing, where is the entrance? Because I'm hearing next down... Stanley, that way somebody else is in.
Do you have a copy with you, you could just show it to him, but, but it's towards the chamber, correct?
No.
Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry. The tire shop. Yeah, no, I, I misspoke, I apologize. Yeah. Yeah, 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 if you...
My name's Mark, I'm one of the partners, and, uh, I'm gonna tell you something. Uh, but let me share my...
Thank you. I wish we could, uh, show that.
Who's she? Who is she? Oh, okay.
Yes, if, yes, use the, uh, yes, we'll have a, you have photos there, we'll have that?
I do.
So it sounds to me that the driveway is far up, way away from... Other, yes.
It's, yeah, it's, it's on the left side of the property.
Okay.
And so, um, oh, yeah, thank you. Little girl the same, so it's, it has, uh, elevations of the two and three-story buildings.
Okay.
So three-story buildings in the back.
Uh-huh. Thank you.
Um, and we wanted to keep the three stories in the back because of the height of the trees.
Okay.
So that kinda makes it look better, you think? And then the two stories on the left side.
Oh yeah.
Uh, so the, the picture is basically what it'll look like, the, the color scheme. And then the next page is the site plan. And Kenny is on the bottom of that page, two-story building on the left, three-story on the back. And then the clubhouse is also on the left. And then there's elevations, two and three stories, and then elevation, well, next you have floor plan. We only have two floor plans, um, one bedroom, which will, uh, make up one-third of the fifty-five units. One bedroom, uh, so that limits people somewhat. And then two-thirds of the units will be two bedrooms. Um, and actually, we, we did a lot of research to kind of determine whether London needed, um, one bedrooms or two bedrooms. They actually need those, but in talking to the other complexes on, uh, Kenny Boulevard, they have a waiting list, mostly for one-bedroom units. Uh, probably because they're less expensive and, uh, empty nesters or, or whatever the situation is, there's a real need of one bedrooms. And we, we actually paid, uh, seven thousand dollars for a feasibility study before we moved forward with really. And, um, I think Mayor has a copy of that and I could get you guys a copy of it, but it basically says there's a real need for housing in London. Um, I mean, it's pretty simple. And if you look at the picture of, of what these will look like, it's gonna be the nicest building in London. Uh, so, you know, you don't have to worry about, um, buildings across the street from you, that don't look nice. Look very, look very nice. Um, because they're new buildings...
Yeah.
They're also gonna consist of, uh, more amenities than the other, uh, apartment complexes as far as the interior design. We're gonna have granite countertops, tile floors, uh, luxury vinyl plankings floors, we won't have carpet. Um, nicer cabinets, I mean, uh, I, I have pictures of, of the cabinetry and the countertops that we're gonna use also. And they're just nicer than what we already have in Canada. I live in London myself, so, you know, I kinda know a little bit about what's here. I've been here about ten years. Um, one of the other questions was safety of children, uh, with the number of units, uh, or one bedrooms and two bedrooms that we have. I, I actually built a hundred and fifty apartments in Westerville about six years ago for Roman Elliott Hughes. Um, and that's actually what this picture of, of the color scheme is from, uh, Ashton Village Apartments in Westerville. Hundred and fifty units. We also had one entrance and exit with that many units and it was never a problem. Um, you know, anybody can go out there and take a look any time of day. It's, it's, it's one exit and entrance and it has a island separating in and out and we'll have that as well, just to help a little bit with the traffic. Certainly, if we can get a turn lane on Kenny, that will help everybody. Uh, but with one and two-bedroom units, we're not gonna have a lot of children. Uh, the children we do have, I mean, you expect parents to keep an eye on them, first of all. Uh, most of the apartment buildings are on the side and back of the property, so that puts the kids, uh, at a bigger distance from the street. And there's also a park right there, so, I mean, I just don't think kids getting in the street, it's gonna be a problem, uh, shouldn't be. Uh, I, I don't think you'll have anywhere near two hundred vehicles. Uh, my experience in Westerville was that there's a lot of people working from home and this was before twenty-twenty. So there's even more people working at home now, so that eliminates traffic flow, a lot of it. There's a lot of retired people getting into one bedrooms, um, a, a lot of, uh, I mean, we just didn't have that many children for some reason. And I really don't know what the rest of the complexes are like in London. Uh, there's more children there because a lot of them have three-bedroom units. So, um, but the, the kids that we had in Westerville, uh, most of them were young, like under ten. So that kinda, uh, uh, means that there won't be an extra vehicle for teenagers. Um, usually if there's two parents or two adults in a house, they both work, so that could mean two vehicles. But again, I mean, you know, it won't be anywhere near two hundred vehicles for fifty units. And, uh, also again, with a hundred and fifty units, traffic was just never a problem. And I, I worked there for three years, I, I built the, the apartments and then I helped do maintenance and leasing for another year before I moved on to a different position with Roman Elliott Hughes. Uh, that's another advantage of this complex, I'm personally going to manage them, uh, and I'm one of the five partners of the project. So there's gonna be a lot of, uh, ownership, local ownership involved, uh, which always helps. Uh, so that's my input, I think.
Thank you.
I mean, it's gonna be great.
Yeah.
Nobody was, anything built close to them, I understand that, but you know, we're all the same, but London needs apartments. Uh, the loans approved. Uh, we have contractors lining up, ready to go.
I have a question, what kind of screening are you gonna provide for the Chamber of Commerce? Are you gonna put in trees, uh, big bushes or what?
Trees, say landscaping?
Uh, yeah, the screening between your complex and the Chamber of Commerce.
And the chamber, yes. We have that, uh, home site plan, but I believe there's actually some, uh, specifications that the city requires, so we'll look at that.
Okay, and I have one other point here. You have a hundred and ten spaces and you've got five handicap spaces. Should you not have more handicap spaces?
Um, the architect that I use, Mort Danny, he's done a lot of work, uh, with apartments and, uh, recent guidelines, and he said that's all we need, so...
Okay.
Um, and again, I mean, two, two, uh, parking spaces per unit. I understand the desire to have that, but we won't, won't need it.
Rich, he'll have to go through code, whatever the code says for, so he'll, the next step will be for him to put his final plan in and then if he needs more, buyer code, he'll have to put more in.
Okay.
Um, we'll also have a playground and a pool, clubhouse.
So I do have a question, if you have a second and third story, I didn't look, do you have elevators or stairs?
Uh, we're doing stairs, we'll have fire suppression.
Okay, so no elevators?
No elevators. Uh, first floor handicap accessible. Um, you do have a height limit in London of thirty-five feet per building or under that.
Alright, anything further? And let me check here, I think that is all we have for... Alright, and I do appreciate you, you know, living in London and taking interest in our city, thank you. Yes. Thank you.
My name is Charlotte Hurst and I live in the condos on Brandon Street. My question is safety. I know, and I'm not sure that, that Kenny's wide enough for three lanes, it's, there's gonna be slim lane. But sometimes when I come from Walmart and I make that left turn onto Kenny, somebody's turning into the gas station. I've almost hit, I can't tell you how many people. And you have the turn lane, it's gonna go left at the light off of Kenny, then you've got the right lane, and then you've got somebody gonna turn into that gas station. And they stop right in the road. So then I'm gonna come down and have somebody, if there's a turn lane, that would make it a lot easier going into an apartment complex. But without it, I don't see how and where we can do it. And that's it.
Thank you. And I think we did address that there will be a turn lane. There, there will be turn lane. Thank you. Okay, and that is all that we have for apartments and our audience concerns. Anything further, one, one eighteen twenty-three?
A move that we leave, or we exit the public hearing?
Sir. Alright, clerk, please take the roll call to exit our public hearing.
Councilman E, excuse me, Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Council President Comer?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Alright, we have exited our public hearing, on to our communications and announcements. Do we have the tax incentive review?
Yeah, that's in ordinance.
Alright, so we do not have any additional communications or announcements. On, and, uh, on to audience concerns, I think we do have, let's see here, what do we have? Like to call, uh, Cole Antle? If you wanna wait, you could wait, it's up to you. Okay, yeah, and we'll bring this legislation later. Thank you for being here.
Hi guys, I'm, I'm Cole Antle, I'm a representative and a, and a partner in the, uh, um, the Main Street, um, I guess, tackling a situation. Revitalizing the, the downtown, um, London has to offer, we've been contacting the mayor and appreciate what he's done so far. Um, but basically, uh, we live in, we live in Hillier, um, we're a development company in Hillier. I, I've, I've worked with Westwood Collective, the major partner in, uh, in the deal, um, and, and really, we've, we've really fallen in love with the idea of revitalizing the downtown district. We work as well with Small Nation out of Delphoun, uh, we've done it in Hillier, cause we live there. London is just the closest one and, and he's from Delaware and, and I see everything Andy. Um, I grew up, I grew up in City and I went to Ohio, I lived in Delaware and, and had that small town, um, downtown that's beautiful. I mean, we've fallen in love with that and we see a lot of similarities in London and we've fallen in love with the downtown and we love to be able to come in and help to vitalize, keep the historic feel that London had. Bring it up to a modern-esque, uh, I guess, place. So it's really not for us about, this is the next dollar, I know it's probably easier, uh, for other people to say, we're, we're backed by Andy who's had a nominal business in the apartment, um, industry, he has twenty-four hundred apartments. So it's not fucking money here, it's really, truly a passion for us, um, and we love to see downtown be greatest form. And like I said, we've, we've fallen in love with what London has to offer and we're really excited to be able to do it. And I know some of you guys have too, um, that's kind of the passion for us and, and, I know Hunter's still passionate, I think he's did a great job, so, try to extend it. I do have, we do have a rendering sneak peek, um, that we've...
I already teased it.
Already teased it.
I, I let him pass it around.
Okay, well, you guys have seen it, um, and it's like obviously, uh, kind of our work speaks for itself. Like I said, we looked it up in Hillier, we've done it, um, we're doing that in Plain City and it's just something that we really truly enjoy making stuff in the morning. So if you have some questions, please.
We'll have to make sure to get that scanned and put on this, uh, city site so everyone can see the rendering, cause I know that the area that you're, uh, purchasing or working on the deal there, it's been a topic of conversation for a while because those, those buildings have been vacant, they're just sitting there. So, you know, I was really glad to hear when, uh, Hunter said you, you was driving through and said, hey, wow, this is, you know, it's like, well, we're lucky. You guys just driving through and decided to, uh, invest in our city, so we are, you know, appreciative of that. And I'm glad to see, you know, along with the other developer, looks like a lot of people are taking a, a big interest in, in London, Ohio. So I'm glad, uh, someone appreciates it as much as we do, so, so thank you. Anything else for, uh, for Cole?
Downtown rendering that I saw looked awesome.
Yeah.
And the sooner you can start, the better.
We're right there with you.
Okay.
And the second story, that's somebody used to be an old opera house, it'd be amazing what you can do with that someday too.
Yeah, yeah, we love the, that's another opportunity, um, I guess, totally aside about this one, phase one would be, get the bottom half, uh, commercial units ready to go, um, rent it out, to bring businesses here. And then basically it would be the, the upper stories, but that's, uh, that's the plan for us and, like I said, we're really excited to be part of it and appreciate all you guys for believing in us and, uh, I think as part of the D U N.
Yeah, that, that was, I think maybe one of their selling points was the old Oddfellas buil-, building that, that, I know Andy talked about that, about how he's got so many great ideas for what can be done with that space upstairs. So, um, it's just exciting times and exciting times downtown and, and want, them wanting to partner with the City of London is, I think, a great thing for the city, so I look forward to it. And these guys have been fantastic and we've had some great meetings and great emails, so it's just very exciting and I appreciate everything that they're doing on their end too.
What's that gets done, you can use the old hotel down between the tracks.
You've already looked at it.
That along with the train station and the, the Ohio Rails, Trailers goes through there, it'd be great. That anchor one end and the courthouse on the other.
Trying to get them to buy everything and fix it up.
And if they...
Well, but they've done it...
They do a nice job, I've seen some of the work they do, they're a very nice job.
Right, if you, uh, what, do you have, what's your, uh, website, you have a site?
Yeah, so if you wanna look at the site of, of most of our work, it's Westwood Collective, um, all that stuff, it's been kind of, that whole Hillier, we've done there. It's quite friendly, Hillier doesn't have what you guys have, um, there's a way more opportunity here, um, for you to establish a world, we just, just doesn't have the building, the character that you guys have. And we make sure to deserve that, um, to be able to vitalize that, it's useful right here in the city compared to where, where we're at.
Alright. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you. Alright, next we have Anita Likens?
Council President?
Yes. Okay. Good to see you, thank you. Alright, and we are moving on to our committee reports. We'll begin with Mr. Eads.
So since the last, the council meeting, we did have the finance meeting. Uh, most of the items we're gonna see tonight or, or that went through are gonna be new items tonight, of which we are going to talk about the abatements. Um, talking about asking for, uh, government funding again from the state, the, uh, what's, what's, what is this? I'm sorry, the, uh, from the six, from the three-point-six down to one-point-six, it was the...
The local government fund.
Local government fund, thank you very much. We're also gonna talk about ballparks later and the street department truck that was totaled, these were all come up in new business as we go.
Thank you. Alright, thank you. Mr. Peters?
Yeah, attended, uh, finance as well and like Greg said, you know, we'll be here in our new business tonight.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Hayes?
Okay, I've got two reports. March the eighth, I attended a special meeting of BPU Board. Uh, we had discussion on tap fees for developers and new developments in the City of London. Uh, this time no action was taking, was taken as we were waiting more information on other municipalities' tap fees. Uh, we went into executive session, uh, we were in there for about an hour and then we adjourned after the executive session. Okay, uh, public safety meeting was held on March the fourteenth. Um, approval of the February amendments, approval of the police chief's report, Mr. Hitt will give that report. Uh, we accepted the fire chief's report, Mr. Stahl will give that report. Uh, Safety Service Director comments, we had storm water regulations and sump pump regulations, which is on the agenda for tonight. Uh, mostly covers new builds. Under old business, uh, we have legislation that will be forthcoming at the first meeting in April for feral cats. Uh, we've added, uh, a funding amount to this, uh, legislation that will be coming, uh, forth to you. For feral cats, we've added a funding amount to this legislation that will be coming forth to you. And we think we've got a pretty comprehensive program ready to go. Police are going to help us with this. And Tammy has been just a delight to work with, and she has helped us so much. She's very giddy to go on this. And so I think everything will be good once we get this legislation together and get the funding on it. And that should be coming up on the first meeting in April, which I believe is fourth, April sixth. Okay, under new business, we talked about federal appropriation for a recreational facility. That will be on the legislation for tonight. We also talked about federal appropriation for public safety facility. That will also be on the agenda for tonight. What we're doing, this would normally go to finance, but finance had already had their meeting. They just, the administration just got this the end of last week. The deadline was actually yesterday. But called, and they have extended it till tomorrow. So they want, they want us to be in agreement with it. So we'll hopefully pass this tonight. And this is just to get into the ballpark with it, see where we're at. We also talked about EPA revolving loan consideration for the water department. This would be for the High Street Water Line, one point two million EPA. We'd like to get with them so they can nominate us for a loan. We also talked about train safety, setting a speed limit for trains going through the City of London. The trains have been clocked. We're using radar on them. Average speed is averaging about thirty miles per hour. So we are going to talk about that tonight also. There's some legislation. And then next council meeting, there will be some other legislation coming up with a speed limit for the trains through London. While we're talking about trains, if we were to try to cite a train for speeding, it's a civil action. You can't give them a ticket. And civil action, you're going to get not less than five, nor more than fifty dollars for each offense. So that's a government for you. Okay, I want to touch on this. There's a rumor going around on people's media that we are hiding our new fire truck. That is an out and out lie. New fire truck is in the firehouse. It's being fitted out with equipment. I sat in it today. I climbed up on the back of it. It's engine three fourteen. Firemen are building cabinets to put on the new engine, saving money for the taxpayers in doing so. Now, when the engine is outfitted, it will be in service. But it can be put in service until it's outfitted. And you don't want to leave a brand new truck sitting out in the elements. So that's why it's inside the garage. If you want to go in and sit, talk to the fire department, they'll probably let you in and let you look at it. But whoever's spreading that rumor, you need to stop it. That's a lie. That's just an out and out lie. Okay. Yes, sir?
Yeah, you can. Yeah, go ahead.
So that was sent to me also. And in my State of the City address, which was all over social media, on the website, at this meeting, I read the whole thing at this meeting. I put it out on all the social media sites, on our website, everywhere, talked about it. During, in that State of the City address, I talked about receiving the fire truck and when it was going to come in, and that we were looking to receive it. And we talked about the interest rate because I believe we got the interest rate at one point four three percent or something, which now we all know there ain't no one point four three percents out there anymore. And then how the, what the cost was, I believe, and then how exponentially more expensive it is now due to inflation and everything. So for someone to say that it's never been talked about, it's been talked about at more meetings than almost anything we've talked about. So I just, I just wanted to put that out there.
So between you, Mr. Hayes, and yourself, you're saying that don't believe everything you hear on social media? I just wanted to be clear that. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And let's see, I think that that is all. The rest of this is part of the legislation tonight. So next safety meeting will be April the eleventh, five P M conference room. Thank you.
Mr. Hayes?
I attended the safety meeting also this past Tuesday. And I'll read through the police chief's report that he submitted. Their continued, their hiring process for open officer positions, Bryce Bennett was hired as a lateral transfer and will fill in, fill one of three open officer positions starting March twenty-first. An architectural design estimate for renovating some space in the building was recently obtained for four thousand dollars, but they've not proceeded with that design. And will consider, reconsider pending a response regarding the federal grant for facility construction. And that's the grant that Rich mentioned. They're working with Mike Carey, Mike Carey's office, and applying for a federal funding for a public safety facility project. And they're seeking twelve million dollars for the construction of a new building, as members of his staff saw our current facility and suggested that they submit a proposal through the community project funds. The Flock Safety Camera Project is underway and is expected to be completed in approximately two months, depending on equipment availability. The project will place seven fixed license plate readers throughout the community to assist in crime prevention investigations. The cameras will alert officers to any hits in the NCIC system. Not sure what that, that's the.
National Crime Information Center.
Okay. So, and then, three minor crashes occurred with our vehicles, again, making five crashes recently. Crashes involved a vehicle at a stop, at a traffic stop, rolling back into the marked cruiser, a cruiser being sideswiped by a delivery truck, and a deer crash while returning from the jail. The crashes were minor, with the deer crash being only extensive repair required forty-five hundred dollars. Car number fifteen is out of service, awaiting an engine replacement for thirty-five hundred dollars. Car nineteen was out of service, waiting for completion of a recall of the rear end. And that's it.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Stahl?
I also attended the finance and the safety, and this is a summary for the fire EMS. Of activities and events, departmental EMS training, legal implications in EMS, departmental fire training, hose movement, ladder placement. Completed paramedic refresher course, completed hands-only CPR for high school students, completed CPR classes for staff of the following, London Health Rehab, Madison Senior Living, and St. Patrick's Early Learning Center. Completed fire safety presentation at Seaton of London, completed hydraulic rescue tools preventive maintenance, completed physical activities tested for full-time candidates and part-time candidates, completed lieutenant assessment center, awaiting results. An update, wrecked transport vehicle has been picked up at a repair shop and currently awaiting repairs. And they are waiting on a loaner vehicle to be delivered by a repair shop. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. On to our city official reports.
All right. Well, good evening. Thanks to everyone for coming out. First thing, happy birthday, Councilman Stahl.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
I attended the Healthy Children and Family Consortium meeting. The main discussion at that meeting was about the community baby shower that they have. It'll be held on April twelfth at the Mount Sterling Community Center. This is an event for new mothers or those expecting, who may need a little bit of help, and they can get some information, information on services, and some goods to help them with their newborn baby. We already spoke about this a little bit, but the property tax abatement on improvements for the three properties in downtown London, which is twenty-two, one oh six to one fourteen, and one sixteen to one twenty-two South Main Street. They are looking to buy the properties and rehab them and bring in some new businesses. We already spoke about this, but they are very community oriented and really do want what is best for the City of London. They're already talking to the chamber about doing some surveys and trying to figure out what people want in this town and what would be a good business in downtown. They have done many rehab projects in historic downtowns, Old Hilliard, Plain City, places like that. So I just want to make it clear, this abatement would be a hundred percent for fifteen years, but it's only on the improvements to the building, okay? Just the improvements. They will continue to pay the property tax on the current value of the property for those fifteen years. So the way this abatement is written is it is on the improvements. So it kind of locks in the rate in a way for the next fifteen years. As you guys know, it comes here, and then it's going to go to the schools, too. So any abatement like this has to go to the schools. It'll have to go to London City School as well as Tolls. We have spoken to them, and kind of what we're hearing is that they are for it. They think it's a good abatement. That is just from their leadership. It is not from their board, but that's from their leadership. Because it's not going to put a hindrance on the school itself, right? They're always worried about tax abatements, especially on, you know, million square foot buildings. That would take a lot of property tax. And also on residential's, because any time a residential comes in, it puts more, I don't want to say a strain, but it adds more kids to their school. So if you abate something that adds kids to their school, that, that's sometimes not a good thing. So just wanted to talk about that and exactly how that is written. The legislation I proposed about helping restore the local government fund is in front of you guys tonight. So once again, the local government fund was reduced in twenty-eleven by fifty percent during Governor Kasich's administration from three point six eight percent. And the current level is at one point six six percent of the general revenue funds. And the past Ohio General Assemblies have repeatedly decreased funding and revenue sharing in recent years, in addition to significantly reducing the local government fund. The sudden revenue loss has make it, has made it tougher on us to help rebuild our infrastructure. We've always used these funds for infrastructure projects, mainly roads. So when that started decreasing, it really started hitting our general fund as well as the projects that we wanted to do. So I hope you guys will pass that legislation tonight so I can send that back to the Ohio Municipal League, and they can get it to their lobbyists so they can really start pushing to hopefully reinstate the local government fund to the pre-Kasich era. The London Parks and Recreation Department does have legislation in front of you guys about two Mary Mack Park softball fields and the Park Avenue Ball Diamond. Talking about digging it up and then adding new dirt to be laid. After that meeting, I started having some discussions with the Park and Recreation Department as well as the Street Department. I believe that we can do a lot of this work ourselves. So we're looking at a total project of around seventy thousand dollars to do those three fields. My feeling is, is that we can do a lot of this in-house and not have to spend money out of the general fund to do this. So we've already started trying to work on the fields and work them up and see what we can do, and then kind of take it from there. And if we're unable to do the work that needs to be done, then possibly bring in a third party to do those. So we're just trying to save money. And so I'm not quite sure what your guys' thoughts are, but that is my, my thought, and speaking with those departments. The curbs that run on South Walnut Street and East First Street are budding City Hall property. They are probably going to need to be extensively repaired or replaced. With the grant we received for the demolition, new sidewalks will be installed, but not the curbs. The city tried to salt cut the curbs, or cut the sidewalks out, but it's really left a bunch of bad spots with those curbs. And the curbs are already kind of deteriorating. So we are looking to repair those or replace those curbs. When the new sidewalks are installed, we did try to get back into that grant money and try to say, hey, if there's any of that grant money left. But what happens is, they give us the amount we requested, county sent it back to the state, and then the state gave it back out to projects that asked for more. So that legislation is in front of you guys tonight, so hopefully we can get that done. We did meet with a company called Aptogy, which I sent you guys all an email on. It's an online and communication specialist. We are currently looking to maybe have our website updated and have an app for the City of London for smartphones. The initial discussions went very well. And like I said, I'm now presenting it to you guys. Get your feelings. Thanks to Councilman Eads for emailing me back and having some questions that we were able to get answered. I just think this is another tool to help communicate with the citizens, get as much information out as possible. And Aptogy is the company that works with London City Schools and that built their app. So I attended the Tax Incentive Review Committee meeting, which is Turk. This is where all the interested partners for the local property tax abatements met to discuss the current abatements. We make sure that they are completing and honoring all aspects of their contracts. So that legislation for the, from the Turk is in front of you guys tonight. I attended the Madison County Public Health District Advisory Council meeting as the City of London representative on that council. This annual meeting consisted of just electing their chairman and secretary, appointing board of health position, and receiving a report from the health commissioner on public health activities throughout the year. The City of London did appoint our representative, Dana Fisher, and that council did vote unanimously to approve that appointment. So the appointment I brought to you guys, I took it to them. And so Dana Fisher will now be the City of London's representative on the Madison County Public Health Board. And then now on to the fun fact, which is two million eight hundred and fifty-two, two hundred and twenty-two. So we did finalize our grant application for the Ohio fifteen fiscal year twenty-twenty-four community project funding. One of these grants that we're requesting is for two million eight hundred and fifty-two thousand two hundred and twenty-two dollars from the federal government for a recreation center. This will be the two court, still building gymnasium to run our youth athletics as well as other recreational activities for all ages. There is also legislation that we spoke about in front of city council for Ohio fifteen funding to build a police department. Congressman Carey is able to submit fifteen projects for funding, and we hope that these projects will be brought forward and possibly funded. I would like to thank Congressman Carey, his staff, especially Mr. Yang, from his staff, for all their help. So I found out about this funding at the lunch that I spoke about that I, that I went to with Representative from Congressman Carey's office, Governor's office, and AG Yo's office. When the information about the grant was released right around ten days ago, we immediately started work to apply for the funding. This is just another way that our administration is working to get funding sources that doesn't burden our citizens, or the general fund, or our budget. So I would like to thank our executive assistant, Amy Reese, for all her hard work on the application. She is one that's been in close contact, contact with Congressman Carey's staff, and she did almost all the paperwork involved for the funding. Finally, I want to thank, there was about eleven different local leaders that I met with around town. So one of the things you have to do is try to get letters of support. So we wrote a letter of support, and I went around and spoke to about eleven different people and asked them to sign our letter of support. And I want to thank them because all eleven did. This was representatives from government entities, school officials, local business people, just a wide array of different people that understand the importance of trying to get this funding, funding for the City of London. So I just want to thank them for that. And then really just thank Amy for all her hard work. She's really turning into our grant guru and able to go out and get us as much free money as possible. So, so that's all I have. Appreciate you guys.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And I'd also like to publicly thank Congressman Carey. I had meetings with them as well, and I did discuss the police, the police department as well as the community center. But I also discussed with them too our infrastructure. So now I hope that they are able to find some grant dollars for our infrastructure as well. I let them know that we did approve, you know, about eighteen five, eighteen million five hundred for that. But I let them know the, that the state that our infrastructure's in, that we're going to need more than that, and we would definitely need help from the federal government if that is possible. And like I mentioned before, he is on the State Ways and Means Commission, so that's a plus for us. And he is, he works really hard to. And he is, he works really hard to represent us. And as you see here, he's doing everything that he can to help support our city and the people that he represents. So I sent them an email thanking them again for coming through for us and, and I look forward to working with them even more in the future. And I thank all the other people too that have met with them and so they're getting it from many different areas. So I, I encourage you to, you can send letters out and, and also let them know the need that we do have in the city because he is willing to work for us and I appreciate that. All right, do we have any other city official reports? All right, one, two, our old business, we have our tabled item, ordinance one fifty-one, twenty-two, a motion to read by title or number.
So moved.
Second, is that going to stay on there, Rich?
That's going to stay on there. Just going to try to get in touch with them today to talk with them, but I just had too many other things happen, but maybe tomorrow. And I think the mayor's been in touch with them also.
Okay.
Are we going to let the clerk read it by title and number?
Oh yeah, we did say that. Clerk, go ahead and read that by title and number because we did say that.
Ordinance one fifty-one dash twenty-two sponsored by Rich Hayes and ordinance amending official zoning map.
That's it, all right, is there anything new or we're just right where we were?
As far as I know, we were, we were where we were, but we had a motion.
Yeah, yeah. All right, so we're moving on to our new business.
No, let's keep on new business, old business. I sent an email that said we probably need to change that so it stays in old business before we go to new.
Don't we have to do the fifth reading on the?
Third reading, oh yeah.
We have the fifth reading first.
They're on the, they're on the, yep. So old business, third reading, resolution.
No, no, fifth reading. We're on the fifth, one eighteen, twenty-three, why everybody's here tonight?
Oh, that's right, it's out of order.
It's out of order.
Sorry about that, I mean.
That's my note.
We'll, we'll work it out.
That's all right.
That's the worst thing that happens tonight, we're okay.
We're good, yeah, because it's over here, all right. Staying in our old business, ordinance one eighteen, twenty-three, fifth reading, a motion to read by title or number?
So moved.
Second.
All right, clerk, please read the ordinance.
Resolution one eighteen dash twenty-three sponsored by John Stahl, resolution adopting the recommendations of the planning commission for preliminary development plan.
This is on what we had the public hearing on.
Mr. President. So I want to thank all of the folks that came out tonight that we haven't seen before. I'm glad that I didn't hear anyone say, "Not in my backyard." Because even though you have some complaints on how this is going to work, no one said, "Not in my backyard." And I understand the safety concerns that you guys have, I'm hoping that these get addressed in the long run. I think that a couple of concerns that Rich brought up may have been a little far-fetched about kids on motorcycles. It may happen, I don't know, but that, I don't know that that was a valid argument for that. I think though, when you guys think back, when you had the condos, when the condos were built, there were also people that were pushing back about those condos. And I think it's worked out over time. So hopefully this all works out for everyone and hopefully this is safe, but thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Motion to adopt.
You have a motion to adopt?
Second.
And a second. Clerk, please take the roll call for adoption.
Councilman Needs?
Yes.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
No.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
One eighteen, twenty-three has been adopted. One, two, for our third reading, resolution one thirty, twenty-three, a motion to read by title or number?
So moved.
Second.
All right, clerk, please read the resolution.
I'm sorry, which one do you?
Uh, one thirty, twenty-three.
Resolution one thirty dash twenty-three sponsored by Andrew Hitt. A resolution adopting the recommendations of the planning commission for preliminary development plan. And I have a note.
So this involves the property between Eagleton and Kenny Road out to thirty-eight. The planning commission has already approved this, but it needs to go through council for approving recommendations for that development of that area. And there's a public hearing on the sixth.
Yep, that is set for four, six.
Or the second, is it the second?
Six.
Six.
Four, six. Any further discussion on one thirty, twenty-three? All right, next, ordinance one thirty-one, twenty-three, a motion to read by title or number?
So moved.
Second.
All right, clerk, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance one thirty-one dash twenty-three sponsored by John Stahl and ordinance amending official zoning map.
There's a public hearing on this on April sixth and that's the one off Lincoln Avenue. There's an old grocery and most of that, for that it must be changed so it's all residential.
All right, any further discussion on one thirty-one, twenty-three? Okay, on to our new business. Resolution one thirty-two, twenty-three, a motion to read by title or number?
So moved.
Second.
All right, clerk, please read the resolution.
Resolution one thirty-two dash twenty-three sponsored by Greg Eads and Henry Comer, a resolution increasing appropriations.
So we were informed that there is some grant money available to the police department specifically to purchase some equipment for our new school resource officer, if I could use the English language today. So there is nineteen hundred dollars, we would like to make that available to the police department as soon as we can so that our resource officer can get outfitted before school ends.
And I think he's looking for a helmet and a vest, Mr. Red, yeah, what plans do we have for that?
So we have the money, we're just appropriating it to their line so they can then purchase for the SRO, yeah. So it's not like receiving a grant, we already have the money in the general fund, we're just appropriating it to his line, correct?
Yep.
Okay.
Rich?
Make the motion to bypass three reading rule.
Second.
Clerk, please take the roll call for suspension.
I almost did that, Rich.
That's all right.
Councilman Needs?
Yes.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes, moved it, moved it off.
Second.
All right, clerk, please take the roll call for adoption.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Uh, please take the roll call for adoption.
Councilman Needs?
Yes.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Resolution one thirty-three, twenty-three, a motion to read by title or number?
So moved.
Second.
All right, clerk, please read the resolution.
Resolution one thirty-three dash twenty-three sponsored by Josh Peters, a resolution increasing appropriations.
This is for the one ton plow truck that was in a accident this past winter. Truck was totaled. And to replace that plow truck, we were asking for appropriation increase of hundred and forty thousand to help with the purchase of the new truck.
Mr. Long, can you come up please? So we can hear you. So I've asked Mr. Long to come up because right before the meeting, Mr. or the Safety Service Director shared some brand-new information. I was hoping Mr. Long would be kind enough to share that with us now.
Buckeye Ford actually has a truck in, this is a truck chassis. About sixty thousand. The equipment, an estimate of another thirty thousand, so I should come in hopefully in the middle of the evening. Mr. Peters had actually sent me one last week. They come in at a hundred and five, but it's only saving eighty-six.
And it sounds like there was an accident made, which is why they have that truck chassis there today, which is available.
Purchased by another village in the county. They have already received theirs or somehow it was a mess. Clarify on the Facebook page, the city trucks aren't insured.
Well, thank you for your due diligence, also you, Councilman Peters, for trying to find a better price.
So, Mr. Long, what I hear you saying is, don't believe everything you hear on such media.
All right, so with that, uh, news of a truck available, Buckeye Ford. Want to move that we suspend the three read?
Second.
Clerk, please take the roll call for suspension.
Councilman Needs?
Yes.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes, moved it off.
Second.
All right, clerk, please take the roll call for adoption.
Councilman Needs?
Yes.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
On to resolution one thirty-four, twenty-three, a motion to read by title or number?
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, please read the resolution.
Resolution one thirty-four dash twenty-three sponsored by Josh Peters, a resolution increasing appropriations.
Okay, this is appropriations to do work on the ballfields of Mary Mack Park and Park Avenue Park. Coming into meeting, I thought we were going to do a total rehab on both of these for close to seventy thousand and then learned that, uh, we're going to do this in-house and now the improvements is going to be down to twenty-one thousand.
There's two, there's two parts.
There's two.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead. Yeah, definitely clarification.
So the first one that we're talking about right now is coming out of the Parks and Playground Fund. So remember there was two, they talked about how they wanted to take some out of Parks and Playground and if this one is the money we would take out of Parks and Playground. So if you put them both together, that's where the seventy is, because the next one's for forty-nine, six fifty-four.
Okay.
It's just out of two different funds.
Gotcha.
Where's the, I'm sorry, you done?
Yeah.
So that was discussed at the meeting that would come out of a couple of different funds. But now that we have new information that, that we may be able to do this at a cheaper price, do we really need to push this through tonight? Until they have a further determination on what can be done and what cannot. And we have two parts to this with the second being forty-nine thousand dollars. I don't know what, what we want to do, I just throwing that out for discussion.
Okay.
I mean, Landon, would you please step up? Maybe you can help clarify some of this, you know.
So that total number of seventy thousand, six hundred and fifty-four dollars, that was basically labor and material from a company and everything like that. That estimate is just a big bulk number, it wasn't broken down. What's the material cost versus what is labor cost or stuff like that? But meeting with somebody else today, they're at about a hundred dollars per ton in their field mix. So if you go back to the original estimate though, about a hundred fifty tons on a, you know, twenty-seven thousand dollar per field, that gives you an idea about fifteen thousand is going to be in, in the field mix itself. So then about twelve thousand labor, so there's still going to be some money that needs appropriated to kind of make it be prepared. It's just that the labor proportion, I think we could do in-house and stuff like that.
So what costs are we looking at doing it in-house and where do we want to get those funds from?
We don't have that total yet, but obviously trying to determine how much field mix. I mean, that job is to remove two inches and add a full two inches. So, you know, are we trying to add two inches of field mix? Plus, you know, that did include new anchors, new base, you know, new anchors and stuff like that, the new home plate. So it's getting those, those prices. I, I think kind of when I did the whole realm of things, we were looking, you know, fifteen hundred dollars, that covered all three fields and stuff like that for anchor spaces, pitching rubber some place and stuff like that. But I mean, just the field mix is going to determine what, how much we want going to be.
So, Mr. McKenzie, I want you to agree with me or not agree with me. I'd like you to agree with me, but either way, my suggestion would be to leave both pieces of legislation on until we can figure out at the next meeting, hopefully we'll have a lot more solid numbers and we'll have a lot better idea if we're going to be able to even do this in-house, right? Because there, it might come down to it that, you know, we can't do it, we're, we're just not equipped to do it and we need to bring a professional in. So that would be my suggestion, I don't know what you would think.
Yeah, we come back with a set number kind of what it's going to take as far as how much field mix you need, uh, to get a number on that. Plus all the, all the, you know, bases, anchors, bases, stuff like that, maybe get a set number, um, fractal of field itself. You know, this company, you know, they hauled it in from out five, Mount Vernon area and instead it's right a couple weeks out from the order right now. This is, you know, the time that they, a lot of people, you know, order this stuff and it really doesn't just sit there in a pile, you know, stuff like that. Plus they were by the tons, the twenty-five tons, you know, at a time that's certain places and that's just a stockpile for them to, to kind of add to their load spots in the field and stuff like that, so. Yeah, I mean, let's get, revisit it and get a number, uh, you know, exact number of them.
So, so may, maybe we do just pass the twenty-one and then leave the forty-nine? Because it sounds like we're going to at least need with the mix and this means that if we can do it, we can get the, get the mix ordered. So, is there an emergency on this? Or, because I don't think we'd have time to wait thirty days to pay for it.
No.
No, there's no emergency.
There's not.
So maybe we pass the twenty-one and then leave on the forty-nine and then so we can have the funding? Yeah.
He even suggested just doing one field at a time, even though Mary Mack filter are side by side. Literally just attacking one field at a time, uh, getting that base layer graded, uh, getting the new mix in, getting that downing graded, uh, you know, getting it all set up kind of that way. You know, you don't order so much field mix and then, you know, send it out on both fields and you actually need more for both fields. Take care of one field first, get an idea, you know, on how much field mix you might have left over to start for your next one and order more if need be, so. But yeah, I mean, obviously if you got a hundred, hundred dollars a ton of field mix and, and you're probably looking at a good seventy-five tons, uh, basically from that first, that, that covers about a inch. So yeah, three fields even out of, uh, need seventy-five tons right there, you know, a good.
Okay, this money's coming, I didn't mean to interrupt anybody, this money's coming out of Parks and Rec, not out of general funds, right?
The twenty-one is coming out of the Parks and Playground Fund, so that is anytime someone builds a home, they have to put into the Parks and Playground Fund.
Okay.
Great.
Mr. President?
Yes.
You won't have to answer any questions for me, but if you want to stand, that's fine. Just to give everyone a little heads up since we were in on the, the original meeting, there were two proposals. I don't know that everybody's had a chance to see those. One proposal has for two inches of removal and adding two inches of top, topping to that. And it was eleven thousand dollars cheaper, I'm sorry, more per field to do two inches as opposed to the one inch. And I was probably the person most outspoken about not wanting to do two inches mostly because of cost. So I appreciate the fact that you and the administration are looking with this. I received a phone call from someone who thought, well, maybe if they did some of the work themselves, that that would really cut down on the cost and it sounds like that's what you've done, so I want to thank you guys for doing that.
Thank you. All right, Josh, what are, which is here, council?
Does this need to be an emergency clause? Yeah, do you want to go with the twenty-one to get that part, Josh?
Yeah.
You do, okay.
So I moved to amend this, uh, resolution one thirty-four, twenty-three to, to an emergency so they can get started.
Second.
All right, clerk, could you please take the roll call for amendment?
Councilman Needs?
Yes.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Motion to adopt.
No, we need a suspension.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That, this is your, it's your turn.
Come on, Rich, you got this.
Okay, motion to suspend.
All right.
There we go.
All right, we have our first and we have our second. Clerk, could you please take the roll call for suspension?
Councilman Needs?
Yes.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes. Moved to adopt.
Second.
All right, please take the roll call for adoption.
She's got to catch up.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
One thirty-four twenty-three has been adopted. Resolution one thirty-five twenty-three, a motion to read by title or number?
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, could you please read the resolution?
Resolution one thirty-five dash twenty-three, sponsored by Josh Peters, a resolution increasing appropriations.
So this is kind of like what we just, uh, were discussing on the ballfields, so, um, I moved to just keep this on until we get a definite. If they're going to be able to complete this in-house, which I have all faith that they will.
All right, we'll leave that on. On to Resolution one thirty-six twenty-three, a motion to read by title or number?
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, could you please read the resolution?
Resolution one thirty-six dash twenty-three, sponsored by Greg Eads, a resolution increasing appropriations.
I'm going to read this, the mayor's already addressed it, it's short. Whereas the city needs to replace the curbs around the former community center and whereas the sidewalks and curbs were torn up during demolition and other things, and whereas the available funds must be appropriated due to that. So, um, quite honestly, if we're going to beautify the area, we certainly can't leave the curbs torn up in the way they are at this point. It's not part of the funding, I think we need to complete the project and I have every confidence it's going to come under the, underneath the forty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars that it's been appropriated, so we have a little wiggle room just in case.
All right, what are our wishes here?
Well, I, no, Rich, I was going to take care of that, but Rich.
Make a motion to suspend the three reading rule.
Second.
All right, first and second. Clerk, please take the roll call for suspension.
Uh, Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Please take roll call for adoption.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you. All right, one, two. Resolution one thirty-seven twenty-three, a motion to read by title or number?
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, please read the resolution.
Resolution one thirty-seven dash twenty-three, sponsored by Josh Peters, a resolution adopting the recommendations of the Tax Incentive Review Council.
As the mayor's stated earlier, he attended this meeting, um, was there a attachment?
There is.
Yeah.
I got it, it's all out of that. So on these, I know that, uh, I believe everybody was up to par on this except for, uh, triple play restaurants, Taco Bell.
Correct, yes.
Correct? And I think that, um, they are going to, uh, terminate CRA based on their failure to provide reports. But everybody else has been in compliance.
And from what I understand too, all attempts were made to contact those that they needed to in that organization in order to, uh, complete that, uh, tax incentive that they had and, uh, there was no response on that. Okay. All right.
Mr. President?
Yes.
So I, I find it curious when you look at this that, and I know people don't always get the same deal. Nissan had a fifty percent abatement for ten years. Stanley, a hundred percent on both for fifteen years. Elite Fitness, sixty percent for ten years, and I know people come in with different things and they get different deals. I just find it curious kind of how that works and we're now looking, this was based on employees? Or is this based on property tax? Can you answer that, please? Do you know?
So CRAs, abatements can be built however you want to build them pretty much. I mean, it could be three years, thirty percent, it can be ten years, uh, fifty percent, about fifteen years, a hundred percent. So it's just, I, you know, if somebody comes to me and says, hey, can we get an abatement? We kind of look at the project and then we go from there, right? And then work with city council on, um, if you guys are in agreeance and then also the school, right? So if there's a project where the school goes, hey, you know, we don't want to give ten years, fifteen percent, there might be some negotiations where we say, well, how about, you know, five years for fifty percent or whatever? So every CRA can be built different and yes, some of it has to do with employees, right? How many new employees are they going to bring in to, uh, for the income tax, right? So we would kind of make ourselves whole, the school would still get some stuff off the income tax and things like that, so. It's just, every deal's different.
Yeah, wasn't there a negotiation with another builder a few years back that they wanted to build, I believe apartments on Kenny? Um, but you couldn't come to an agreement on this type of an agreement?
Yeah, so I know that, uh, different apartments have come to us about abatements. I, and I'm not one to, to kind of beat around the bush and I just tell them, you know, apartment abatements are very tough because what you're doing is you're abating, you know, a bunch of new households, right? So you are putting a lot of new kids into the school. The schools mainly run off property tax, right? That's where they get a lot of their money is off the property tax. So you're, you're putting a strain on the schools and they're not having the funds coming in to help with those extra teachers, extra rooms, whatever they may need. So, abatements on housing is always very difficult, especially apartments. And that was what the thought was, if everybody was in that finance meeting, that was the thought of city council also was, you know, we think we can get apartments to come without abating and, and we're seeing that now, right? We're, we're seeing the apartments want to come here and not happen to abate them. So, you know, we'll take independence way for, you know, that's some residency, right? But that's mainly fifty-five plus. Also, they brought in a restaurant and people felt that London needed a, a, a restaurant at that time and that's why that abatement was built for, I believe that one's ten years for a hundred percent instead of fifteen. So you can just kind of build them however you want. I am not a huge proponent of tax abatements on apartments. It's just the way it is because I don't think the schools would pass them and, and I think apartments are going to come anyway. I think abatements are, you know, used to entice people, entice things that we need. Also, um, entice businesses to stay, you know? That was the thing with Elite FTS. Elite FTS was looking to get a much bigger space and they were talking about going into Columbus. And that's where that abatement came from and we kind of, kind of went with the, with the fifty percent just to kind of, you know, help them out a little bit and entice them to stay because they were so good for our community. So, it's just, everyone's different, it's however we want to build them.
That, that, thanks for that, that'll come up a little bit later when we talk about one forty-one.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you. Anything further? What are our wishes, one thirty-seven twenty-three?
This does need to be filed by the end of the month.
I make a motion to bypass three reading rule.
Second.
Clerk, please take the roll call for suspension.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
All right, clerk, please take the roll call for adoption.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
On to Resolution one thirty-eight twenty-three, a motion to read by title or number?
So moved.
Second.
All right, clerk, please read the resolution.
Resolution number one thirty-eight dash thirty-two, or excuse me, twenty-three. Sponsored by Rich Hayes, urging the legislative branches of the federal government as well as the state of Ohio to enact legislation to further protect the citizens of the city of London, Ohio from the inherent dangers of a train derailment on the tracks located at near our city and declaring an emergency.
This is pretty self-explanatory, uh, con- considering what we've had in, uh, Palas- East Palestine and the, last week over in Springfield, and then there was another one down in Georgia that was fairly big. This is just a resolution asking them to do whatever they can to enact legislation that will help the railroads to keep this from happening again and possibly having, uh, large loss of life or, you know, God forbid, uh, very terrible explosion where it would blow up half the city. We don't want to carry on these cars anymore and we, we need to get this done and, um, need the federal government and the state of Ohio to jump in and help us.
Okay. Uh, question I do have on this is, uh, is there, um, a way that we will know when hazardous material's coming through our city? Rex, would you have information on that? Do they, do they say like, uh, they give you a message and let you know, hey, this is going to come through or?
They don't let you, there, you can go and check the manifests of the trains that are coming through. Uh, but they don't, I don't think they let you know in advance. We had an EMA meeting this week and we started working on and reviewing some of these things with London and the other communities around Madison County. And I think it was reported that they don't always know what's on those, what's on those trains. And it's nothing new though, the way they reported it, it's been that way for years.
And do you, uh, is there a current, a current speed limit that trains have in our city or is there no speed limit or?
We as the city of London don't have one.
Well, that the federal government has through, because I know we can't set the speed limit, but the federal government can.
As far as I know, I do not know.
Yeah, I th- I think there's some federal stuff, so we're looking into that right now and, and actually Chris has been helping us out with a little bit of that. So I greatly appreciate her help and Jennifer's been doing some studies on that too. So that's, that's a whole different piece of legislation. This is just, just like the local government fund, it's to send our support resolution to the Ohio Municipal League to start pushing for more regulations.
Just a question, maybe you gentlemen know the answer. Um, the, the, uh, the wreck in Springfield that occurred, whether or not this is true, I don't know. It's not from Face- Facebook, but it is from some local people that the train that derailed in Springfield had actually stopped in London and was broke down. Prior to leaving London and then getting to Springfield before it derailed. So it was a lot closer than we might have thought. I don't, do you know if there's any truth to that?
Yeah.
But it didn't stall in London? I don't know if that was one of the stops or not, we don't, I don't know that.
Yeah, I thought it went through London, but, and that was, uh, after, yeah, but it didn't stop in London. So what you're tell- no, I'm not even going to do it.
No, cause that one wasn't from there.
Okay, so. Yeah, so, uh, Resolution one thirty-eight twenty-three, what are our wishes here?
Make a motion to suspend.
Second.
All right, clerk, please take the roll call for suspension.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes, moved to adopt.
Second.
All right, clerk, please take the roll call for adoption.
Councilman Eads?
Yep.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yep.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
All right, thank you. One to Resolution one thirty-nine twenty-three, a motion to read by title or number?
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, please read the resolution.
Resolution one thirty-nine dash twenty-three, sponsored by Rich Hayes and Henry Comer. A resolution authorizing the mayor of the city of London, Ohio to apply for an Ohio EPA water supply revolving loan account, WSRLA, on behalf of the city of London for construction of the North Main Street Water Main Replacement Project designating a de- dedicated repayment source for the loan and declaring an emergency.
And this is, uh, part, uh, of the eighteen point five million that was already approved. And this is just, uh, this is what, one point two million in order for us to begin on this portion of that project? Uh, the North, North Main Street, uh, Water Main Replacement Project. Any questions here? Rich, you have anything you want to add?
Hmm, you've pretty much got it. Make a motion to.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. I'm only because, um, Mr. Castle and I discussed this earlier, he actually told me earlier he would prefer this to wait for, for additional readings. Is that still true, Mr. Castle? This doesn't have to be until May first, so it's up to council's wishes. You don't, do not have to pass if there's an emergency clause on it. So you do not have to pass it tonight, you can leave it on for the next two more council meetings and it would still have time for us to get it filed. Was there a reason why you said you would prefer to wait? Or that we could wait? Prefer, I just meant you, you can wait if you don't want to. Sometimes you don't like to suspend stuff, so I said you could wait if you want to. That's true. That's true. But if you do so happen to want to suspend it, then we could expedite the process and get it filed, yeah.
Yeah. Does it make any difference on interest rates?
No. No, oh, oh, this isn't real, this is just giving us nominated for the loan process. There's so many steps you got to go through, but one of the things is we had to wait until council approved the rate increases because you had to show how you were going to pay, make those loan payments if, if, when we go through the process. It's not like you apply for a loan and you can't say you can pay for it and they'll approve it, you have to have those steps in place and we're just following the guidelines. We have a guy by the name of Curtis Strickland who's helping us through those processes and he's telling us step by step what we need to do. And this is just the next step. So we will be applying, once we're nominated, we'll be bringing it back to council to apply and accept the loan.
All right, so what are our wishes here? Want to leave that on or do we want to go ahead and spend that and get the process going? Cause there's nothing new going to, yeah, there's nothing new going to come up, but it allows us to go ahead and get that process started. So what are our wishes here?
Make a motion to suspend.
Second.
Clerk, please take the roll call for suspension.
Councilman Eads?
Since we know how I stand, I say no.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes. Moved to adopt, can we?
Nope.
No.
We can't, so it stays on. All right, one, two, Resolution one forty twenty-three, a motion to read by title or number?
So moved.
Second.
All right, clerk, please read the resolution.
Resolution one forty dash twenty-three, sponsored by Josh Peters. Strongly urging the Ohio governor and members of the Ohio General Assembly to restore the local government fund to pre-recession levels.
Okay, back in, uh, two thousand and eleven, uh, past Governor Kasich administration, yeah, they, uh, really defunded, uh, our revenue here, um, and we're just asking to get that back. Yeah, it looks like these reductions have resulted in loss of, uh, revenue of over one point five million dollars for the city of London. Let's see. And right now, yeah, they, we went from three point six eight percent of general funds to the current level of one point six six percent. And we're just, we'd love to get that back.
Any further discussion, one forty twenty-three? All right, what are our wishes here?
Make a motion to suspend.
Second.
Clerk, please take the roll call for suspension.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
Motion to adopt it.
Second.
All right, motion to adopt, first and second. Clerk, please take the roll call for adoption.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
On to ordinance one forty-one twenty-three, a motion to read by title or number?
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance number one forty-one dash twenty-three, sponsored by Greg Eads and Henry Comer. An ordinance approving and authorizing the execution and delivery of a community reinvestment area agreement and declaring an emergency.
Okay, so one forty-one, one forty-two and one forty-three are all intertwined because the Main Street London Collective is buying three separate properties, actually more than three separate storefronts, but three separate plotted properties, um, in downtown London. Um, I do have a couple additional questions that I would like to, to ask.
Um, I do have a couple additional questions that I would like to, to ask, um, and, but before I, before I do that, um, I do not personally have a business relationship with this group yet, although their, uh, their main gentleman did contact my insurance agency for a quote. Uh, I've not signed anything, and I do not have a business relationship with him yet. So I did check with the law director, who felt that it would probably best if I abstained from a vote, and not try to sway your opinion in, in a legal way. So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say a few things, not trying to sway your opinion so much. Uh, first thing is, I would really like to see this left on for at least one more reading, because I think there's so many people that don't know what this is and what's going on with it. I'm hoping it gets in the Madison Press. I hope they pick up on it. People read the story, or Madison Messenger. Yeah, I'm real, I'm showing my age, Messenger, uh, in that they have a chance to read this and maybe come if they want to ask questions at a, at a future meeting. Um, I did have a couple additional questions. We brought up, um, the abatements earlier, and I told the mayor, I was gonna bring that up, because you did not want to abate apartments, but their second or third phases could be these apartments. Um, so.
I, I can talk about that. So we're talking about fifty-five, a hundred apartment, apartment complexes, or we're talking about four apartments?
Four total, in all of those buildings, or just one?
Yeah.
Will you, will you pop up here, please?
Thank you.
On phase two also, or?
Yeah. So like I said, we're talking about, we're not talking about fifty, a hundred, a hundred and fifty apartments. We're talking about four. I mean, that's a big difference, so.
In addition to bringing business in to the properties.
You're absolutely right. And it was the same thing kind of with Independence Way, right? I mean, I don't believe if it wa- wasn't for the restaurant that the abatement would pass with just condos and, and what they were doing. I think the, the restaurants would, and that's what I talked about, where every CRA is different, so.
And, and the difference for this, just to point that out, though, along those lines, is that they are abating the property taxes based on the current value of the building.
They're going, they're gonna abate the improvements, so it, it locks in what the current property value is.
Okay.
So they'll still be paying property tax. They'll just be paying what's, it's currently at.
Well, well, maybe we'll find this answer. I just think maybe we should think about what this answer is, and that is, for example, twenty-two South Main Street on the auditor's website is currently appraised at fifty thousand dollars. They are going to pay more than fifty thousand dollars for the building, and they're going to do improvements. So that, in the long run, improves that value that will, those property taxes will not be collected on in the future. Is that a concern that you should think about as council members? I'm just bringing that up. Um, and then for you, mayor, uh, in this applic- or in this, it states that the city investigated the application, and the developer is financially responsible. How do we know that up here before we make that decision?
Could you repeat your question?
Yeah, so it says the, in, in the language, the city investigated the application and the developer is financially responsible.
Yeah, so we work with David Kell. He's the one who builds our CRAs for us. He builds our abatements for us, as the, uh, economic developer for the county also, with Madison County Futurique. So he does his due diligence on, um, you know, what, what they're about, what they've done in the past. I mean, you could pretty much look at their track record and be able to answer that question.
Well, I don't know that that one equals the other, although they do have a track record. I don't, I, I don't know that necessarily means they're financially responsible in the long run. That's my question, is how do we know that up here before we make that decision? So do we talk to David Kell? Is there any information that you can share later?
Yeah, just email me your question, and we'll get an answer for you. If you would've emailed me this week, I could've had an answer for you today.
Well, since I seen the document last night at six o'clock, I'm sorry, I did not email it to you today. So anyway, I, I don't want to get too far into the weeds, because I'm gonna abstain from a vote in the long run, but when I've talked to people in the past, when I've talked to people that have put their own money into downtown businesses, I will tell you that the property owners I've talked to are happy to hear that your group is coming here and going to make that investment, that they feel that only benefits them and the community as a whole. So I, I just wanted to say that. Anybody else?
And I just wanted to also say, uh, you know, even though it's currently valued at fifty thousand dollars, we will have employees working there as well, so then, uh, hopefully they're gonna live here in the city, and we can benefit from that in multiple ways.
Or, right, you know, we don't have a great company like this coming in, and they sit empty for another ten years.
Right.
And they collect taxes on fifty thousand dollars, or whatever the building is, so.
Right. So, thank you. Anything else? All right, thank you. And we can't suspend, there's not enough. So we want to leave this on, because we can't suspend it.
Well, you can try, but I'm gonna vote no.
Yeah, we can. We want to leave it on. We'll leave it on, okay? And I would also, too, like to get a chance to put the, uh, the, the rendering on our city site, too, so everyone can see, and we'll get even more, uh, gravity moving towards this as, as we go along, so. All right, one, two, ordinance 14223, a motion to read by title or number.
So moved.
Second.
All right, clerk, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance 142 dash 23, sponsored by Greg Eads and Henry Comer. An ordinance approving and authorizing the execution and delivery of a community reinvestment, um, area agreement and declaring an emergency.
This is part two, but I'm gonna let Mr. Comer handle this one.
All right, this is part two, same thing as before.
Okay.
All right, uh, any further questions on this?
So.
Vote on it, because they might find another insurance person.
I don't, I don't have their business yet, so that's okay.
All right. Other questions? All right. One to ordinance 14323, a motion to read by title or number.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Clerk, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance 143 dash 23, sponsored by Greg Eads and Henry Comer. An ordinance approving and authorizing the execution and delivery of a community reinvestment area agreement and declaring an emergency.
And this is part three of that. Proposed plan. Okay, on to Resolution 14423, a motion to read by title or number.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, please read the resolution.
Resolution 144 dash 23, sponsored by Greg Eads and Henry Comer. A resolution authorizing the safety service director to trade in property unneeded, obsolete, or unfit for municipal purpose.
So the police department's informed us there were three older vehicles that they would like to trade in, and possibly get another vehicle that should not bust the budget in the long run, but these would be for trade-in purposes later. That's it?
Yeah, that's it. Any questions? All right, what are our wishes here?
Just go ahead and suspend it.
Second.
All right. Clerk, please take the roll call for suspension.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes, moved to adopt.
Second.
All right. Clerk, please take the roll call for adoption.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
One, two. Ordinance 14523, a motion to read by title or number.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Clerk, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance 145 dash 23, sponsored by Josh Peters. An ordinance amending section 1476 of the codified ordinances.
All right, give me a second here. Because all these are out of whack. Is there an attachment?
Yes.
Oh, wait a minute. Yeah.
I'll make sure I group those together next time. I email you. Sorry.
We need to have a micro, microphone back here for him.
Bill, if you'd just give him like an FYI on exactly what's going on, I think it'll help, help out a little bit for the storm service.
Nope, that's the, that's the next one. This is the moving earth requirements.
So what you're saying is, anything, an acre or more, they got submit plans for stormwater?
All right, thank you. Anything else?
We probably don't need to, wouldn't think, go into emergency on this. It's been talked about for a long time. It's finally coming out.
All right, is that our wishes?
But that's up to you guys.
Yeah, there's no, uh, there's no emergency or anything on this? All right, so we want to leave that on? All right, we can leave that on. Next, on to ordinance 14623, a motion to read by title or number.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Clerk, please read the ordinance.
Ordinance 146 dash 23, sponsored by Josh Peters. An ordinance amending section 1476 of the codified ordinances.
All right, I'm gonna bring Bill back up on this one as well. Now, is this all new that we're adding?
So I, I know this has been talked about. You've brought this up at service meetings for six months, a year. Oh, Burgess and Ibel, Burgess and Ipel, were they involved, or? Oh, oh, choice one, okay. So this, this was all run by them. This was, I mean, I know it's pretty extensive, yeah, yeah. I, I do want to make a suggestion. Let me get back up to it. So in the very first page, um, let's see, design of drainage facilities B, drop down under hydraulic design. This is just, uh, I think a simple, clear enough of this. Under B, uh, for all roadway design improvements, and then it goes down to the bottom for acceptable spread. So for reference, reference Ohio Department of Transportation, location and design, volume two, the most current edition. We might want to change that, just so it says, or the most current edition, so we don't have to come back and change this one sentence at times. If it's updates on their end, it would automatically update for us. It would automatically reference the most current document out there. I didn't go through it line by line. I just happened to catch that. That might be something we want to look at. And, and once again, I think there's a lot of information here. I personally would like to leave it on, so I can actually get a chance to look at this a little closer.
All right. Uh, any other further dis- discussion on 14623? Any suggestions? Want to leave that on?
Yeah.
Yes, okay, and, and thank you for the, uh, recommendation there. Uh, so when that goes back to the committee, maybe they'll add that on there.
Yeah, I think it's a little thing, so you don't have to come back and change it all the time, just like when we updated the minimum salary requirement, so that it says it's at least minimum wage, and we don't have to go back and do that.
Thank you. All right, one, two, Resolution 14723, a motion to read by title or number.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Clerk, please read the resolution.
Resolution, excuse me, Resolution 147 dash 23, sponsored by Henry Comer. A resolution requesting financial assistance.
Okay, and this is, uh, we alluded to this earlier. This is, uh, dollars that are available, uh, from the federal, federal government to help us to build a, a, uh, police station. And the amount there is, was that thirteen million?
Twelve million.
Is it twelve? Okay. Twelve million dollars. And that is, that sounds good. It's, it's, uh, sounds really, that, that would definitely be good, especially since we've just had that on the levy, and it did not pass. So this would be great to, uh, be able to, uh, get these dollars, and this is grant dollars, correct, Mr. Castle? Okay, so that, okay. And that is twelve million dollars that we could, uh, we use towards that police station.
Mr. President?
Yes.
So on this, on section two, down below, that the safety service director and the mayor is hereby authorized and directed to apply and to provide all information, does not necessarily mean we're accepting money at this point. We're just applying. It's not accepting at this point, right? Oh, okay.
All right.
Yeah.
One of the stipulations that you need to have in mind.
Okay. Okay.
All right, any additional questions?
Make a motion to suspend.
Second.
Clerk, please take the roll call for suspension.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes, moved to adopt.
Second.
All right, first and second for adoption. Clerk, please take the roll call.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Eads?
Stahl, I don't hear you say me, yes.
Oh, Councilman Stahl?
She wants to know why I'm chuckling, because she's having trouble keeping up, and it goes to the end of the line, and he immediately.
Immediately says.
And Rich immediately seconds that, so that'll give you shorthand on that, because when it, it, it's like one sentence for John. Yes, I moved to adopt. Boom, boom.
All right, one, two, Resolution 14823, a motion to read by title or number.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Clerk, could you please read the resolution?
Resolution 148 dash 23, sponsored by Henry Comer. A resolution requesting financial assistance.
All right, and this is, uh, similar to the one right before this, except this is two million dollars, correct? Two point eight five, two point eight five million dollars, and this would, uh, these dollars would go towards building a, uh, community center. New recreation facility, two point eight five. Do we have any discussion here? All right, what are our wishes?
Make a motion to suspend.
Second.
All right. Clerk, could you please take the roll call for suspension?
Councilman Eads?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Peter?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes, moved it up.
Second.
Told ya.
Clerk, please take the roll call for adoption.
Councilman Eads?
Yes.
Councilman Peters?
Yes.
Councilman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Hitt?
Yes.
Councilman Stahl?
Yes.
If you ask him to go first, it'll confuse him.
I think I rotate through.
All right, well, let's take a look at that, I don't see anything else, all right, we are on to roundtable. We'll start with, uh, Mr. Eads.
Oh, okay. Uh, as I pointed out earlier, I was glad people came to discuss, you know, the apartment complex, we're gonna have other things that are gonna have to have public hearings. I'm glad when people get involved, they have different viewpoints, I do wanna hear those. Um, I do have a, uh, a couple things that came up, if you've, if you've paid attention to Facebook, and many of you have, um, one of the questions was, uh, the road beside the London Visual Arts Guild, that it seems pretty tore up now, because of the trucks in and out, and the question was, will that be repaired? I kind of replied back that that's not, wasn't really officially a city road, probably wasn't designed quite the same way, but then I would ask the question. You, you intend to re, to repair that? Okay, thank you. And the second thing, and I've also seen this on Facebook, but I'm gonna tell you this one's true, and you can scoff if you want to. The Affordable Connectivity Program is a federal program of which anyone in Madison County, I do believe, on their residence can get thirty do, or thirty dollars a month knocked off of their internet service, right? And I've heard of this, and I'd seen that, but I got the email the other day, did it, and ten minutes later, I've saved thirty dollars on my home account. And I, and I did. Pardon me? No, no. Nope, you just have to live in Madison County.
He, the spectrum?
You, it, it's, no, it's a federal, no, I went through spectrum, but this is a federal program. Uh, your application to participate has been approved, this federal credit for your spectrum internet service will be reflected on your account within thirty days. To receive the credit, you must activate your spectrum internet service, which I already had, and use it at least once a month. This is also affordable. If you decide to switch internet providers, you can get the same thirty dollars, because it's a federal program, and they will still subsidize your bill with a different carrier. So anyone you get internet service from, I do believe, is eligible, or you're eligible to get thirty dollars off, and I just wanted to share that.
What's the name of it again?
It's the Affordable Connectivity Program.
Okay.
Well, thank you for that information, I hope everyone gets that. One-two, Mr. Peters?
Uh, just wanna thank everybody coming out tonight, uh, Mr. Stahl, happy birthday. That's all I have.
All right, Mr. Hayes?
I wanna thank everybody for coming out tonight, uh, to clarify what I said earlier about the motorcycles or the motorbikes. We have had occasion where, uh, kids from other parts of town have come in on dirt bikes, and small motorbikes, and just small kid bikes, and have went back and tried to run down, we have these little splashways that go all through the complex, and they've wanted to up and down them. So, we did call police in, got, got stopped, it happened twice, that I know of, uh, so, uh, police come, got stopped, and haven't seen them back since. But that's what I was referring to, which is a safety issue, too, if one of them would go down, or one of them would go down in front of one of our cars, and somebody hit them, uh, God forbid, kill them, uh, it'd be a mess. So, that's, that was what I was referring to, I should've phrased it better than I did. I wanna thank all of our city employees for jobs well done, uh, I don't, you don't have to get up, Bill, but I don't know if you have that new spreader on, the truck shed with the juice? But if you, yeah, if you did, and you used that the other day, thank you, appreciate it. So, um, something else I wanted to say, I wanna thank you all, um, appreciate you all. Uh, God bless city of London, we're on the move, uh, I think things are turning the corner, and things are gonna start popping here, so, it's all good, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hitt. Yeah, I don't know if you mentioned it or not, but the safety meeting is April eleventh?
Yes.
Five o'clock in the meeting room over here.
Yes.
All right, thank you, Mr. Stahl.
Tonight is a quarter of the year, and all the legislation we've passed, I think it's kinda fantastic, all the different types, all the sewer water, and it looks, somebody gonna do downtown, different things, like you said, we're turning the corner, and apartments coming in, houses coming in, it's, things are really looking good. And just wanna thank everybody for, uh, best wishes for my seventy-fourth birthday today, thank you.
Happy birthday.
All right, happy birthday. Not, not gonna sing, not gonna sing.
Seventy-fourth? That's bad, no.
I also would like to thank everyone for coming out this evening, and happy birthday, uh, to Mr. Stahl, and it's good to see, uh, all of the growth happening here in the city. Um, you know, one thing that I do see is, there is a lot of growth around us, around the city of London, and that growth is coming to London. I think, uh, what we need to do is, we need to make sure that we are ready for that growth, so that way, as it comes here, we can facilitate the growth, instead of reacting to it, because it's inevitable. Um, it's, it's, you know, growth is moving this way, to the, to the west, like I've said before, i- if you go any further east, you're already past Newark. You go north, you're already past Delaware, and south, no one's moving south too much, they wanna move, uh, to the west. We're right by seventy, we're by seventy-one, we have fifty-six, they have forty-two, it's the absolute perfect place for growth, and I'd say it's a, a perfect place for housing. So I think that we need to, uh, you know, em- embrace the fact that it, it's, it's inevitable, and we see people that aren't necessarily from London, and they're taking an interest in our city, and I think it's awesome, because, uh, you know, Lon- London does have a lot of great potential, and I'm glad that even other people are seeing that, too. So with that, like, a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Pat, did you need this back? Pat, did you need that back? Did you need that? Okay, good, thank you, thank you.